Vanessa usually.
Oh, do you have to name the meeting?
Well, they put the date and timeline so that because that's on that Facebook and stuff. I gave you a chair.
Are they doing fiber here in Berlin County?
Yes.
Supposedly.
Have they already started?
No.
Thursday is when we're supposedly converting this office to the county.
The digging and the needed through is a nightmare. And then the.
Well, I shouldn't say I don't. I don't.
Depending on the company, all the fiber is good.
Yeah. Right here is bad.
Are we on now, right?
I think we're all.
Okay, we're good. Okay, yeah.
Hi. Lisa, are you ready?
Yeah, right, I'm ready.
I would call this special order. Good evening, everybody. So let's begin, everybody.
United Nations take the flag of the United States of America and be the Republic for which its names, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, could you please call the board chair?
Tracy Kaplan?
Yes.
Angela Brown?
Yes.
Jenny Slips? Tara Shields?
Here.
Jasper DeChristopher? Ray Armshut?
Here.
Hiko Shu?
I'm not really comfortable. I have any other concerns besides those others up here. And it's four of us. We were pointing out here tonight that Tino is going to have to recuse herself because she isn't adjacent to anybody that wanted to do that. So can you bear with this meeting until after?
Yes.
Yeah, on. It looks like July 31st of 2025 on the township website and July 31st of 2025 on the township Facebook page.
We have minutes to our last meeting, which is back July 8th. If we've already had a chance to review those, if anyone can mention those. Who's second?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Mr. Armshut?
Yes.
Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
So tonight we're going to have an application of BDC to the national process. The applicant has made a determination in the last table of the year. You want to communicate with the department.
Dan came in about three o'clock to talk about it and he's looking for somebody for another hearing. And we mentioned that there were only going to be like three people on board. And he said he would rather table continue it to the next available meeting. He agreed to that.
So typically when we've done that, the applicants here have their personal request for that. Does anybody know?
Jesse and Aubrey and I were all there and said, Dan, you agree? He said, yes.
I would accept that. No problem. So we will table that and continue it if you need a time certain, however.
Matt's got me turned over. It'll be, I think it's our first meeting in September. It's the next available because we have an August 25th. August, let me.
It's 26th, I think.
August 26th we have. So it would be September 9th would be the next available.
Jerry, I don't know if you're going to be in contact with Dan and I guess I don't have the appropriate messages and discussion about this, but there were some concerns just with the way this is laid out. And if maybe there are the applicant know that I have those concerns.
That's fine. You have a list of what the concerns.
So this is the most of all was blurring. On page, they went to page. They call up the parcel numbers. So on page 14 of the regular sized packet, under application of identity, they call up the Delaware county ID numbers and which are the parcel numbers with the subareas. And they consistently throughout the text refer to the subarea for the parcel number that is, I mean, in 002, subarea C is the school. But throughout the text, they keep referring to that as area that's being built on. But it's parcel A of the school. And I had to make sure of that. So parcel three, which is C, and it's the parcel that ends in 002, they refer to all throughout the text. Oh, that's where this community is at. But that's actually what they refer to on page 14 as subarea A.
So confusion of parcel C versus parcel A, is that?
Yes.
Well, sometimes it's parcel one, parcel two, parcel three.
They're jumbled up, okay.
Yeah, well, and then there's something called zone C, which again, it's supposed to be this subarea C as they call out on page 14. I don't apparently know what it is, but again, that's the school parcel, not where they would be building parcel. So that made me feel really uncomfortable that they were, in everything, they were referring to this parcel of the school.
It's mixed, is what you're saying. I can get.
They messed that up throughout the entire document.
Okay, I'll talk to Dan. That was on the regular size notebook is where you're talking.
Is that an inconsistency? Like, I don't see how we would.
We wouldn't.
We couldn't.
Okay.
They don't need to.
I mean, excuse me, Stan, or presentation or any of them.
And then I don't know. I don't. In their net densities, they've included the parcel of the school.
Okay.
I don't agree with that. That was never intended to be built on. It's completely separate parcel that did not have any residential on it.
Just to, so to clarify, like on page 17, all the, 16th of, all the, all the net divergences refer to subarea C in the Ross State's P area, which is the school.
Yeah. Everyone.
So page 17, I'd start 16th because what they were, that was just an example of where like.
Other than where they have it messed up.
Okay.
And then they say subarea B of parcel ground, approximately 21.5 acres of area was donated. And that's.
Actually, subarea C.
Subarea B is the large lot.
Then so probably what I'd do is just if Dan, he has to verify the information that there is some inconsistencies about the subareas and the parcel numbers.
And in some way, if they're calling it, if they're calling subarea C with that parcel number, that's fine. But all throughout the document, they're saying that the trouble is being called subarea C on that parcel number, but that parcel number is the school. So.
Okay.
I need to go through it and change.
Yeah, I need to.
Reissue this.
I would want a clean document because that's where we're at five, six, seven years. There's absolutely no way that we would be able to synthesize the attention of what they presented here.
But also I would really like them to leave that, the way that they are doing their net density calculations.
Yeah, net density has a school.
Units per acre, because they are calling up a 21.57 acres that this holds in one, that there's 66 homes.
Not in the way back, we've had some issues like this before where they count things like a school has room space, green space.
About that's what they're trying to do.
And that's the kind of.
But it's, you know, I'm not agreeing with them. And it seems to me that's what we designed. So.
Yeah, that's, when you do that stuff, and I realize that where they're coming from on this, and seen it before is they're counting that in here because they're making a donation of that layout to the school. And so therefore they're trying to do the total density of what they.
Oh, yeah.
Asked for, the 1.85 onto the smaller unit to make up for, so which yields very high density development, really high density. But they need to get the subareas, the stuff pointed to the right thing. And they need to explain that in their document. That's what they're doing here. Without it, I agree with what Nancy said. Angela, four or five years from now, nobody's going to have a clue with this. It's not spelled out in there. It's not. It's not going to be something that anybody can follow.
Well, and we've seen this, they sell it to somebody else. I'm not saying they're going to, but you know, new person, new builder, new owner comes in and they're like, well, we don't care.
Is it, I'm asking for the, do you guys recommend approval or when you make the decision, is it done? Does this go back to the trustees after you've heard it?
So this is a two-step. Yeah. So yeah, it's supposed to the trustees.
Okay.
Yeah, has this been also like part of those schools? Is it, was it donated previously or is it going to be donated with this?
I think it's donated with this.
Okay. I think I guess.
I believe that's already done because the school's there.
Yeah, I know that was, they talked about it before.
So is there, so is there school board minutes or discussion on this? Where they have to donate it or?
Not with the packet that I received and looked through as best I could. Do you have any comments from Levi? And then we have a compliance officer from Orange donated to us right now to review all of these plans. Before he's coming in tomorrow, I can rego with that with him and also talk to Dan about the concerns.
Just in fairness to Dan, since we've got a month. Yeah, there's no way. Because even if they sit there and go, go write all these denoms, blah, blah, blah. I want a clean document.
The other thing that, I'm sorry, I'm undertaking a lot of notes here for this, but on page 17, under diversion score, produce the minimum lots size subarea C from 20,000 square feet, 5,375 square feet. I have to believe that there's a title there.
This should be like 15,000.
Yeah.
Well, we assume they're 10 and 11,000.
Well, I understand that 5,000 square feet. This, I can't even understand on there now, what would be, I mean, that's, that's like, I don't even know how to put that hook on that.
Well, I'll make sure that I can request all the changes and submit new documents as best I can.
All right. Thank you.
I didn't see some stuff in there according to what pages. As far as, you know, they're talking about as far as 43 feet and so on on the front page and stuff. Nobody, but I see the total block length and so on. So it's nebulous and I don't think it's something that should be that bad.
Yeah, many of these that we get actually like called out, like lots 1 through 5 or 10,000 square feet. Lots, you know, 15 through 20 or 6,100, do you know what I mean? And they can do that anywhere.
They, the question to it was on the, I think that it need one.
Yeah, right.
Whereas that is quarter unit 62, 43 foot lot, 62, 62 foot lot on three large lots, subarea B is one. Yeah, they usually take that into more detail. Because you know, when you look at these drawings, there's more than three lots. And well, I guess from a 62 and a 43, but I think maybe it's very, they have to actually call.
I'll, I'll work with Dan. I honestly, I haven't, I haven't gone into the detail that you've just went into.
It's not that. Yeah, I mean, you're already, yeah. Anyway, he's not here, so.
I'm pretty fine here by the lots where they're talking about subarea A, B, and C. I don't know for sure if you've got these, I'll make sure that you do. It doesn't have a perfect down like I'm used to, which is each of the lots and how large they were. And that isn't all these development plans. I'll be calling you guys with further questions.
That's a start. Can we move on from this? I guess we are time certain.
Yes.
So discussion possible methods to the township's end resolution. The absence of Levi, I think we've covered it a little bit. Have we gotten response from? Comments?
Scotty?
Yes.
No, well, he sent back to Levi, they make changes different on the actual document. But I'm at page 60 of 370 pages. So I'm hopeful that I did it. Back and forth, Scott to give to the group here, but that's my resolution.
Still in progress. So Jerry asked if that goes on the inspector and this is from you.
Let me, I'll try and update you best as I can if I forget something, I'm sorry. They hired a new receptionist secretary named Cindy Ward is her name. And she started last Monday and she's picking stuff up quickly. The first thing they've given her was the I work queue stuff that Jenna's been doing. Cause Jen, at the end of this one, is going to the cemetery group. So that transition's there. As far as decisions at Aubrey's level, they currently are interviewing. They have a good candidate, I guess, to make an offer for the assistant fire inspector. Chief, assistant fire chief, if I don't get too many, do you have? And then they've also listed and they have three candidates that Aubrey's going to interview next week for the director of zoning, which would be Levi was a zoning inspector and they're hiring a more of a, what the leadership role and then as soon as they hire that, then they're going to enter host the zoning inspector position, which I, I'm right now on the title as assistant zoning inspector. I'm supposed to be pulling signs. If you see signs out there, tell me where they are because I can't, I don't have time to go out right now. Because we've got a lot of applications coming in, permits and everything, still doing the mess up. But the plan is to have ultimately a director of zoning, a zoning inspector and an assistant zoning inspector. That's what they plan for that department. They're right now working on plans to moving the whole office and building a new building. Right now they're saying that the current fire station would be the zoning office and a new fire station might be side. That's all their property right now. It's just how they're going to move stuff around. And that's Jesse, Jesse's in charge of all of the sextons, the, oh, they hired a sexton for the government. I'm very excited about her enthusiasm. She supposedly starts tomorrow. I don't know what else to.
What is Cindy Moore's title? I know it's not the same position that Kathy had.
I think she's secretary slash admin assistant. Cause part of her job is to greet people, but the other person always is assigned tasks. So.
So is she technically the zoning clerk?
Clerk.
Secretary?
Secret, she's taking, I think she's zoning secretary in administrative support. So she, she faces the offices where she answers to phones and stuff. But Aubrey is giving her administrative face for her job when she's doing stuff for the trustees. So it's kind of a mixed world. She seems to be handling it and taking on whatever Aubrey's asked. But she'll be the one, you know, the initial part, putting in the new permits coming in and I work queue. And the last I heard on that is they're trying to still get the financial so that we can accept credit cards instead of just cash or check. That's kind of what's been going on the last month or so because, yeah.
Any idea, ma, that's gotten pretty easy to do.
To what?
To use credit cards for me, just depending on your agents.
And it really, the pay rock solution that was recommended to them about a while back, they didn't want to take it because of indemnification clauses that were in there. And it was a 50 some page document. And Tony Stucko said he, the county prosecutor's office wouldn't do that. When Aubrey came on board, she convinced the trustees to use outside counsel. And they've said, it looks good. They would, they would do it in, because I found it strange that indemnification clauses, we have a, we rent this facility out, we have a page of indemnification clauses in there. So we use it, but we don't let anybody else do it. The township is what I found. And I think Aubrey is uncovered way in a lot of the townships surrounding us use Bayrock. So and no one's having trouble with that. That would make permit process a lot less of a burden because if they can do the permit online and pay online, then it's automatically done. We've already set up in I work queue, the website to be, for them to sign in and do the permit online. So that we can't use it yet because we don't, they still have to send in the check or cash.
There's a fee for credit cards, right?
There is no fee to the township.
But to the user.
Yes, yeah, they pay 3%, 3% up to some amount for the permit, including if we can put other permits, which I, in the future, the applications for reason. You know, right now we're working with just the permits for new builds and any of the residential stuff, the updates of decks or whatever is what the first phase was that we were trying to get done. And let all the other stuff, once we can accept something in cash, which it opens a lot of stuff up. And all we need is a laptop and you can sign into their website. You don't even need a machine to do the credit card reader or anything like that. So I said, you know, I, that's kind of, to me, I put a lot of time into trying to do the project management through that. And he said, no, we can't do it. So they were going to go with the point and pay. And then theirs were cost to township money and the management of it. You have to track all those transactions and reconcile them at the end. So I wanted to stay away from that. Those were complex ones because we're still small in the staff. How many could we have to do that kind of stuff? So that's what's going on there.
Didn't you say that our information services is transitioning away from?
Thank you. Thursday, this building will be converted to the county's IT department. So instead of us going through, IT made real was our provider. And anytime we'd have a problem with our laptop and workstation, we'd call them and they'd remote in and help figure it out. We're changing to the county, their system. And they've been in last Friday and yesterday. And the final turnover of that is Thursday is what Jesse told me, that all the office will be on that network then. Plus I heard fiber earlier, I know that's connection still with the fire department first and then us.
Oh, that makes sense.
So.
Okay, will that change the way we use our email or anything?
Should not change the email. Will still Gmail will still be that email addresses, but who we call if we have a problem is a change.
Yeah, they're pretty responsive too.
So that's, yeah.
So much change, maybe.
So all that, all that, that is 28 hours a week. So thank you for being patient with us. I'd like to sit up there again.
Okay, Tara, any updates on our landscaping?
Well, they don't want to get trees.
Trees are important, yes.
One thing that I discussed was making edits to the, I guess, trailer and on these vehicles. And I don't know if that's something that we can do, but just how it's written currently. If they move, if they, or send a violation and they move it.
Every 14 days it starts over. We finally did, by the way, Tara, the truck that was there for a year and a half, it's gone. He got rid of it. I don't know what he did with it. I don't care, but it's a little on that property. And I think Cheshire Village looks a lot better than it did two years ago. But it is all NCD, so we have to be a little bit tolerant. Equipment goes in and out because they're renting those spaces out to different businesses and stuff. I did one last thing, I'm sorry to interrupt you. About three weeks ago now, I saw the semi truck on Ford Street. And so I decided I went to the truck driver and I said, you know, it's a violation. It's illegal to park across Ford Street to unload your, they're doing awnings and stuff. And I said, we've told the sheriff that we would like for them to enforce the law and he will be ticketed. And all that has to happen is a resident, if they see it, they call the sheriff. The sheriff comes out and will ticket you. And he says, well, I don't want points on my drivers. I'm CD, all of that stuff, they can, they can lose their rights to even drive the truck. And he said, I said, sir, we don't want you to get a ticket. I said, the best thing to do is they usually have these depots where you can move it from a 53 foot semi into a box truck and they're not blocking the road. That's not our choice, that's up to the delivery company. But right after that, he was gone, so.
They have different drivers every time too, which is tough.
Yeah, but if, okay, if the trucking company, we've already talked to Mary Lou Gop. And she's responsible for the property, but then the truck driver is the one that would be that. And if they, obviously refused to, but he stayed sideways and eventually had to unload his truck. But they, hopefully they won't block Ford Street. Tomorrow starts school again, I think, or at least for someone.
Not Zariah Olentangian.
Really?
Almost, it's Olentangian, one other district. Almost, it's all in Tangi and one other district don't start tomorrow.
Oh.
Or next week.
Okay.
But every other district is.
I saw a bunch of, Russ was out this morning.
Somewhere today. Oh, they're doing their routes.
Okay.
They're practicing routes, yeah.
You know, I know it's starting soon, I was trying, that's the other thing on that. Violations road that we're trying to clean stuff up as we can. We've only got like four or five open tickets right now. Well, it's better than, yeah, Berlin Station Road has been cleaned up a lot. A lot of people have, so.
And I saw Sherman Road, they, or recommend it gets decreased at, it's five miles an hour.
Yeah, forty-five down to forty miles an hour.
Yeah.
I saw everybody go forty in an alley before, because that's not a two-minute road.
That, that will change, that's the perquels, but then because you won't be able to access it on three Bs for you, in, in certain directions.
I've asked that question many times, I don't want to repeat, and, you know, I can really answer it. If the documentation is out there on the left, but it's not.
Is there like a stop where?
Yeah. So, don't really get one. Is the perp way supposed to, it's north of Sherman Road. It's supposed to be the north of.
Yes. Well, I've seen where the dirt's starting to pile up.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, you have to find the design where it's going to come out.
It's supposed to go through the warehouse and almost straight across the street, three B's and K.
You can see a lot of it.
Yeah, you can see kind of how it's, how it's.
Well, it's like six phases is what I see.
Yes, but the portion that goes across three B's and K.
Okay.
It's supposed to go through the warehouse and, and then cut over to seventy-one.
Okay. I've seen them do work between three Bs and K and seventy-one, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yes.
This way, well, it hasn't taken Ray's house yet, but.
Yeah, it's only been thirty years.
And that, you know, they're removing that one commercial that's been there forever. Everybody talks about our tax base, but it's. The warehouse, yeah, yeah. And it really bisects our whole, I mean, kind of getting eaten from sub area from the east and Delaware from the west and now they're cutting our little township basically in half. Perp way, I don't know, we don't recognize much.
Speaking of change, I think you're getting to the next meeting schedule.
We're in there.
What's going to happen there is that's a one, a little over an acre of land on thirty-six, thirty-seven, that is currently FR one.
Bella, Bella.
And it's, it's a boat repair business, and that's the one that's going to be here number twenty.
That's the one they came in for the, they came in for questions, questions, yeah.
I believe so, I was at that meeting.
Yeah, that's what that was.
And, and the latest on that, in working with the Orange Township's zoning office, what was recommended is they go with NCD because that boat repair is in that, but it's not in PCD. So divergence and all that, so I'm just trying to get, run it to clarify which one will work best when they come in for the year. I do have documents, but I'm trying to see if they can change it.
I have a lobby at that meeting. I can't read that one.
Okay. Seems to be hard to fill the five seats, guys, but I appreciate, everybody's got things to do.
That's, that's my son's birthday, and that's.
Your priorities are, your priorities are in the right place.
Kathy, we're going to, okay. Anything else from anybody? No?
Well, I attended a meeting here about a week and a half ago, asked Angela, it was advertised as a thirty-six, thirty-seven project meeting. Turned out to actually be strictly thirty-seven. And they are planning, they being Ho Doc and whoever else is behind it, to do upgrades to all the intersections from the city of Delaware until thirty-seven joins up with Route one sixty-one out east of Johnstown. And it's thirty-three or thirty-four intersections.
It was thirty-four.
It was thirty-four, okay. And not mention of anything with thirty-six or, in other words, not piece of it, because they excluded it in for the township because of what the perp way is supposed to do, so they left it off of their study and off the presentation.
Oh, no, I didn't.
So, we basically learned absolutely nothing. It sounds like, I might be exaggerating, but it sounds like about a thirty-year project because almost all the intersections was to, had left turn lanes, signalize them for, before we stop, a couple of them are going to be roundabouts, et cetera. In other words, it was the idea to make traffic move, flow without actually widening roadways. That was the bottom line. So, I will wish you good luck. On the, on the news for the last two days, on this channel, so on channel ten, they have started, there is a new coalition called the I seventy-three slash seventy-four slash seventy-five, that is a new coalition to build this one thousand mile freeway from the Upper Peninsula of Michigan to the Myrtle Beach. And it's going to follow twenty-three, well, we all know that because the actual first meeting I attended of that was in October of nineteen ninety-five. And it's now a brand new thing, again, and they're going to do a study to see how to build I seventy-three. Apparently it has new backers, and they said that the backer was in nineteen ninety-five, so that's been on the news for the last two days, and we'll see where that leads.
When you say backers, that means toll products, right?
No, there, there was, there were some entrepreneurs behind it, or I don't lose behind it this time.
Interesting. Sounds expensive.
Oh, it does. Our taxpayer dollars of working on a thousand mile freeway through my land, and their justification that they said on channel ten last night was that they were doing this because by putting in a freeway, it would make all that land between there develop with businesses and so on. So apparently what we have out there today through the state of Ohio has a detractor business, and so we'll build, so we'll build a freeway.
Oh, yes.
That was on channel.
Hopefully I won't do that one. Well, thanks for keeping us in that one. Okay, I can't think of anything else. Anybody else got anything? It's a new record, all right.
Can you undo what's, Miss Tira?
Let's put your hand, everybody, see you on January second.
One thing that Dan did, if anybody's interested, I'm going to go back there and get the, there's.